Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Spokane City Council Study Session for June 8. We've got three items. The last one is a report from the Regional Homeless Collaborative Executive Team. And before that, we're going to hear homelessness funding overview. But first, we are going to have a presentation from Soriana Taylor and Alexa from Innovation High School. And if you all want to come up to the podium.
Are we supposed to go behind?
Right, right, right there. And try to speak into that mic.
Yeah.
That way people at home can hear.
All right. I am Soriana Taylor, and I go to Innovation High School. I'm a 10th grader.
I'm Alexa. I also go to Innovation High School, and I'm also a 10th grader.
We have this project. It's like a civic outreach project and mainly to just create some sort of change in the city of Spokane. And so we made a survey on Google Forms and made it into a scannable QR code and just went around and tried to get some feedback and information from just like everyday people that might not necessarily be in a group or anything, just, yeah. So do you have anything you want to say?
Yeah, so the whole point of the project is really to create more community outreach and to have people have a voice within these meetings that might not have the opportunity to do so.
Yeah, exactly. So we got some polls that have information, and then at the end, it's a little short answer. We just asked for suggestions, anything like that.
Yeah. One of the first questions that we asked was if people felt safe in their community. This one was really interesting because 50% said yes, and then 50% said sometimes. And then in relation to that, we also asked if people felt safe interacting with Spokane Police. 12% said no, and 31% said sometimes, and then 56 said yes. And then we asked, are all public resources accessible? And 37% said sometimes, 6.3% said no, and then 56% said yes. And I personally find this very interesting because I live in a neighborhood--
Excuse me, I may have you speak a little closer to that mic because your voice is just a little soft.
Sorry. I personally find this very interesting because I live in a neighborhood where there's a lot of homeless people, but not a lot of like resources for them.
Yeah.
And then we asked, are all public resources helpful? And 50% said sometimes, and then 50% said yes.
Yeah, and then for the one where they could type out an answer, we just asked, are there any changes or suggestions that you would like to be made to the city of Spokane? We did ask for a zip code. Unfortunately, we're not able to see zip code for the polls, which would have been pretty interesting because I feel like there's, unless you know like exactly where it's coming from, there's not a lot that can be done. Like, okay, anyways, yeah. So some of the responses I got were a lot about, I think the main two were about police and then homelessness, which I heard that there's going to be people talking after this about homelessness. So you guys are probably aware, but I don't know, it's still interesting to hear. We got answers from a few different zip codes. I'll list some of them. We got 99207, 99203, 99208, and a few more. So it was a pretty wide range, which is good to have. So some of the answers we got were regarding police and small petty crimes, thefts, speeding, just stuff like that, be more ticketed. And I feel like the thought behind that was if we get those like kind of taken down, then the rest of them, I don't know how to describe it exactly, but I think there's a law. I'm not sure like what the exact amount is, but if it's under a certain amount for a theft, then it won't be punished as severely. And while that can be helpful, I feel like some police officers might not attend to all of the crimes as much because at the end of the day, if it's under a certain amount, it's not going to go result in an arrest or anything like that. So we had some feedback saying those be ticketed, just stuff like that. In regard to homelessness, we got a suggestion that more emergency housing for homelessness because I don't know a lot about this, but from what I do know, it's the point where there's shelters and like on the streets, and then there's other housing that you can go on a list for. But there's nothing really in between. And I've gone to a couple of the homeless coalition meetings with my mom, and they've talked a little bit about this, but I feel like it's still good to talk about it more, that there's kind of that gray area in between where there's not like a place to stay while you're on the waiting list to get into one of those. And so getting something there would be pretty helpful. Someone suggested that. Also, we have a suggestion from 99208, that area code, that when they're opening a shelter, there should be police. Because if right off the bat, you kind of have some sort of like discipline or like rule, then it'll be less prone to any chaos in the future. I don't know if that's where they were going, but that's how I understood it. We got, oh, about police, that there should be more trauma-informed care. So if they're responding to a scene that includes mental health or addiction, that there's better trainings and programs. People, police officers are more informed on how to handle those, which could be helpful because we never want the actual interaction to be more traumatic than what actually happened. And instead of, I know there are already programs where for specific situations, going to like a rehab program or some other treatment other than jail. And we got some responses talking about that, that instead of jail, there are other programs or opportunities that people can go to. So it can help them instead of. And I'm not saying jail doesn't help. It's just like for that specific issue, it can be looked into more. And then I think the last one we got was just about like the city improving street sweeping for safe travel, more public transportation improved, and more dog parks and bike trails. And we also got one talking about how homeowners, if they're new or if they've been a homeowner for a while, but just don't know exactly like what uptake looks like and stuff like that, that there should be offered free homeowner classes to help them just contribute to the care and appearance of the community and increase the homeowner autonomy and stuff like that. So I think that's really all we have. If you want to say anything. Yeah, so thank you, guys, for listening to us. We appreciate it.
It's good. I'm wondering if you could email one of our staff your actual slides or your numbers and things like that?
Yeah.
I think we would love to digest that. It's great to hear from you directly and especially with your feelings about it. But I think we would like that actual data. That would be helpful for us to see.
Awesome. Yeah. Well, thank you. I appreciate it. We both do. Thank you, guys.
Well, I'll just say thank you as young people in our city. We keep looking for you, and today you have shown up with your interest and your efforts to learn more about our city and give us a different perspective. Sometimes we know we can get in our own silos, and we just hear what we hear, but it was very interesting. And to come out as 10th graders down the city hall, we appreciate your taking time out today.
Yeah, of course.
Good for you guys.
Yeah, and speaking in front of groups is never easy, and you guys did a great job. So kudos to that. And we're all here for a short time, and someday it's going to be, you know, potentially you sitting in our position. And so I'm glad that you're taking an interest in probably the city's biggest issue because it's going to require some, you know, maybe some fresh eyes, fresh ears, fresh thoughts. And so one day, maybe you're here and making good decisions. So keep it up.
Yeah. Well, thank you for that feedback.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, everyone. Okay, next up, homelessness funding overview. Kim McCollum and Jen Sarcides.
Hi, good morning, everyone. I am here to give you an overview today on our homelessness funding within the CHHS Department. I want to note that some of this is not necessarily directly tied to homelessness, so I'm kind of giving you a broad overview of our entire department's funding. I want to be clear about what's not included. I did not include funds that we spent out more than a year ago, like ESG CV funds that we spent out and have been used and we won't continue to get. I also have not included funds that we have not yet been allocated or given. So we've asked for some funds through the Department of Commerce for emergency housing. There's some conversation about adding REIT potentially to TRACK, but those things have been, not been finalized, so I did not include those in my assessment. And we'll go ahead and just get started. Okay. So to start with, one of the most well-recognized funds that we operate is our HUD Continuum of Care Funds. And on each one of these slides, what I tried to do was give you a picture of who is the governing board that oversees these funds? What is the governing plan that's responsible for guiding the use of these funds? What's the estimated annual revenue and the funding details? The estimated annual revenue is going to be challenging to just stack on top of itself because the funding cycles are variable. So I just want to make that clear before we move forward. So for HUD Continuum of Care Funds, that is run by the COC Board, and it adheres to the Spokane City Spokane County Five-Year Strategy to End Homelessness, which is developed by the COC Board in concert with the collaborative applicant, who is currently the CHHS Department. There is about $4.3 million annually for our COC funds. The projects need to be scored and ranked annually, and we review performance metrics and recommend reallocation, and that's done in concert with the board. So we, as staff members do a review, the board does a review, and then there's a vote that happens to determine what projects will move forward. Some of the projects that are eligible for funding would be permanent housing, transitional housing, supportive services only, HMIS, coordinated entry, and sometimes homeless prevention. As a UFA, which is a special designation that we get, we also have some planning dollars that we receive. We also currently have approximately $2.6 million annually for the HUD Youth Homeless Demonstration Project that is youth-specific and that will join the COC in 2024. And that includes transitional housing, rapid rehousing, supportive services only, HMIS, and coordinated entry. Next, we have our HUD Entitlement Funds. These are governed by the CHHS Board and the Affordable Housing Committee. Of course, in all of these instances, when we go to enter into contract, it comes through council and goes through the regular city process. But the CHHS Board and the Affordable Housing Committee do the initial review of any applications and recommend an allocation for those dollars. It is governed by the five-year consolidated plan and the annual action plan, which is our essentially the subsequent annual update to that consolidated plan for us to say, here's how we're tracking on our plan. We receive approximately $3.3 million annually in CDBG funds. 70% of those funds must be used for activities that benefit low and moderate income persons, which would be less than 80% of area median income. It must adhere to our consolidated plan. So there's a wide variety of activities that can be part of CDBG funds, but it's important that whatever we want to spend funds on is represented within that consolidated plan so that we can show HUD that we said we were going to spend money on it, and then we did spend money on it. Public services are an eligible activity for CDBG funds. They are capped at 15% of the total award, and so that does have some limitations. Currently, the public services are, have been wrapped into our HHOS or our five-year awards, and we're looking at pulling that out in the next cycle and dropping it in with all of the other CDBG funds for tracking purposes. We receive approximately $1.2 million annually for home funds, which is for building, buying, or rehabilitating affordable housing for rent or home ownership. There's also some very limited eligibility for direct rental assistance to low-income people. There's only one program that we're aware of that's on the, in the process of sunsetting that does that tenant-based rental assistance dollars. The next set of funds in our entitlement dollars are ESG or our Emergency Shelter Grant Funds. That is $279,000 annually. These are the only HUD dollars that we get that are designated specifically for emergency shelter, and unfortunately, you can see, it's quite a small amount. But with these funds, you're able to engage homeless individuals and families who are living on the street, improve the number and quality of emergency shelters for homeless, help operate these shelters, and provide essential services to shelter residents. And the ESG is also currently part of our five-year awards or our HHOS portfolio. That's where those funds are grouped. But I put them under here because they still have to adhere to the consolidated plan. Home ARP is a set of one-time funds that we'll be getting. It is eligible to be spent on tenant-based rental assistance, development and supportive affordable housing, provision of supportive services, and acquisition and development of non-congregate shelter. And our one-time dollar amount for that is $4.4 million. And all of these funds are allocated to us based on census tract data. So the population that we have, they kind of give us an allocation that's associated with the population that we have here in Spokane. Next, I grouped our HHOS funds, which stands for Homeless Housing and Operations, or excuse me, Operations and Services. These funds are also referred to as our five-year awards. This was the first opportunity that the CHHS Department had where they kind of combined a bunch of different funds. They put out a combined funding notice and then allocated awards that all came in through that singular funnel. It is governed by the CHHS Board slash the RFP Committee. In the first iteration, the COC Board also helped with that. There has been some separation since that time where the COC has been focusing exclusively on COC dollars, but we're open to, you know, what that could look like in the future. And we do have COC Board liaison with our CHHS Board, so there's connecting points there. The governing plan is the Spokane City slash Spokane County Five-Year Strategy to End Homelessness. And again, currently, as I mentioned, the HHOS awards include CDBG services funds, but those will be going back underneath the CDBG portfolio. So underneath our HHOS, we would have our CHG or our Consolidated Homeless Grant, which is approximately $895,000 annually, comes from the Department of Commerce. It is eligible to be spent on emergency shelter, drop-in or continuous stay, transitional housing, homeless prevention, rapid rehousing, permanent supportive housing, and street outreach. We also have our HAA Funds, which are Homeless Housing Assistance Act, which come from document recording fees. That's approximately $990,000 annually. These funds must be used to directly accomplish the goals of the 10-year plan created by each county, which is created in our community by our Continuum of Care Board. It's eligible to be spent on emergency shelter, transitional housing, rental assistance, consolidated emergency assistance, overnight youth shelters, and any activity that assists in providing housing and shelter for homeless people. So this is one of our broadest categories that allows us the most flexibility. We also have $1.795 million annually that comes through our Homeless Services Grant, which is from City General Fund dollars. That is eligible to be spent on emergency shelter, transitional housing, permanent supportive housing, rapid rehousing, coordinated assessment, and diversion. And we get $3.74 million annually for our HEN or Housing and Essential Needs Program that is actually adjacent to and connected to the CHG program, but because it's unique and there's some unique qualifiers to it, I separated it out for the purposes of this meeting. That is also from the Department of Commerce. It allows for transitional housing, homelessness prevention, rapid rehousing, permanent supportive housing, street outreach, and homeless are at risk or referral, excuse me, homeless or at risk by referral through DSHS. Then we have our local sales tax and use funds. So that is governed currently by the CHHS Board and the Affordable Housing Committee. In the first round, we did go through a priority review process with the Housing Action Subcommittee to identify those initial first priorities that were, we wanted to focus on for those funds. That is approximately $7.7 million annually. Those come from sales tax and use dollars. They're for incomes at or below 60% AMI. And 60% of the funding must be used for constructing affordable housing, funding the operations and maintenance of new units and facilities where housing-related programs are provided, or newly constructed evaluation and treatment centers. These are some additional commerce funds that we have seen come through this year. They are governed by the CHHS Board and the RFP Committee, as well as the Spokane City Spokane County Five-Year Strategy to End Homelessness. We have approximately $1.1 million annually that was given to us through the CHG Eviction Prevention Program. That is connected to those CHG funds that you saw in the HHOS slide, but because we are out of cycle with that five-year award, we're having to do a separate RFP for those funds. We also saw $2.6 million for approximately six months, although by the time the contract was signed, we were really operating more about four, three to four months for row funds. That came through Department of Commerce, and that provided some rapid rehousing through Housing Navigators and some assistance at TRACK, and it may or may not be extended, although we did get some word from Commerce that they did plan to extend both of those programs, although at a slightly reduced rate.
Do we know that amount?
I have been verbally told that TRACK would receive $1.5 million, and Housing Navigators, I did not get an exact number, but they would reduce the number of units contracted from 30 to 15. These are the funds that we requested through Commerce's Emergency Housing Funds Awards, which are expected sometime mid-June, I'm hoping in the next week or two. These are funds that were allocated in the, in the biennial budget and were purposefully set to fill the gap for sunsetting funds that came about through COVID. So things like ESG CV, which is our Emergency Shelter Grant COVID Dollars, which we got from both HUD and Department of Commerce. Those funds are set to expire federally June 30 of this year, or some of them have been extended through September 30 of this year. We actually expensed all of our funds by June 30 of last year. So we have not had those funds in our community for some time, and we did do a gap fill with criminal justice funds to keep some of those beds open. We had about 420 extra beds that came into our system through some of these dollars. So we requested additional funds for all of those agencies that received those dollars. We did also request for some funds from TRACK, or excuse me, for TRACK. TRACK is not currently deemed eligible. It didn't ever receive ESG CV dollars. It did receive some federal funding through Department of Commerce, which is set to sunset, but it's not sunsetting by June 30 or September 30 of this year. So we may not get those funds. The other part that we threw in there was Canaan. So Canaan was previously funded by ESG CV dollars, so I requested money in the budget to reopen Canaan. We'll see if they do that. They're still debating on whether or not they would reopen something that had closed. The other conversation that we were having was whether or not we could obtain some of the funds to support the beds that were absorbed into TRACK that were previously located at Canaan. As we get additional information, I'd be glad to share that, those updates as they come in. Funds we have that are currently going away. We have ACI and YAP dollars, which are part of the Office of Homeless Youth. These dollars are not leaving our community. They're actually going to the direct subrecipient that we have right now, which is VOA. They are applying for those funds directly, and they requested that as us taking some of that admin off of the top to be the pass-through was challenging for them for these two particular programs. So we have been working with them on transitioning those over directly to VOA. The Shelter Program Grant funded the Young Adult Shelter, and it also funded Canaan for five months. That's what allowed us to keep Canaan open from January through, just into about the first week of May this year. That was about $2 million. It will not be renewed, but it is eligible to be part of that emergency shelter funding request. So you would see that on the previous slide. We have criminal justice dollars. Criminal justice dollars are not leaving our community, but they won't continue to be eligible to be spent on homeless activities going forward. That did fund those gap contracts that I previously spoke about, as well as TRACK. And then also the federal and state COVID eviction prevention dollars are kind of on their last legs right now. And you can see in 2022, we had about $14 million, $14.5 million, 2023, just under $900,000 that will be leaving our community as well.
And maybe you're, the REIT dollars are going away, too.
They are. I did not include REIT because we technically have not entered into any contract with them at this time.
Right.
But they would be, they would fall under that same category.
Yeah.
Correct. These are funds that will be available to our community, but would not be directly awarded to the city. So I thought it was important to include these because I know I've gotten questions in the past of, are we applying for these funds? Why aren't you guys applying for these funds? So there was $38 million that was set aside for permanent supportive housing through the Apple Health and Homes program in the biennial operating budget. There was $95 million for permanent supportive housing through Apple Health and Homes in the biennial capital budget, so for building and then also for supporting those programs. $40 million for home ownership projects for first-time homebuyers in the biennial capital budget. $25 million for housing persons with intellectual and developmental disabilities in the capital budget. $25 million for preservation of existing affordable housing to continue to serve low-income households in the capital budget. And $6 million for acquisition and preservation of mobile homes in the biennial capital budget. These are funds that are typically applied for by either developers who are building or by organizations that are actually running the programs themselves. And so these would not be funds that we would typically apply for unless we chose as a city that we wanted to enter into the development realm.
It just to be, those are statewide numbers, not-- not local Spokane numbers.
Those are statewide, correct. Yes. And that's the end of my slideshow. So I'm glad to answer any questions or go back to any slides as needed. Yes.
Jen, I just want to say, this is fantastic. Thank you. This is exactly the kind of information that we need. What I would love to see is all of this wrapped up kind of in a single spreadsheet so you can really kind of see how the pots interact with each other, especially with the general fund. But also would love to see what is the current capacity of each pot? What are the committed or likely expenditures out of each pot? And then if, could even look back maybe three years and just see what have we used previously? I think that'd be so immensely helpful.
Would it be helpful to see that by program type? Or do you want it by funding source?
Funding source.
Funding source. Okay. Yeah, and I know that I talked with several people about trying to come up with a way to display a one-pager for this. And for at least the purposes of reviewing in a PowerPoint on a screen, it was really challenging. But I think if we had the option to use something like a spreadsheet, it'd be a lot easier for us to be able to provide that information in a navigable document.
Be super helpful. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And I understand that Councilmember Kinnear, who's appearing virtually, has a question. Councilmember Kinnear?
Thank you, Jen. Thanks for all this information. I concur with Councilmember Cavcart. I'd like to see a spreadsheet. There's a lot of moving parts here. I also would like to see what is our track record of moving people from shelters into permanent housing or permanent supportive housing? We need those numbers. I'd like to see what a total is for what we've spent on TRAC so far and what we're projected to spend on TRAC. I just don't have a good handle on, I feel like we're spending too much money on homelessness, not enough money on getting people into permanent housing and permanent supportive housing. It is also concerning that we're working with a regional approach right now, but I don't see any accommodations for that. So what are we looking at going forward if everybody's contributing? It is impossible to know a lot of those elements right now, but we could project and say, if we go forward with a regional approach, we can expect to lessen our burden by this percentage or something like that. This seems just like the black hole is continuing and growing. And I don't see an end in sight and that's concerning to me.
Yeah, thank you for those comments. And it's my understanding that there's a presentation coming after this from the regional authority and so they would probably be addressing some of those more regional aspects. My focus today was just providing, here's what we have inside of our department today. As far as outcomes go, we are working on a dashboard that we're hoping to bring to council at the end of this month to, you know, be able to show some of those outcomes that you guys have all been asking from us and see if that's going to solve kind of the viewpoint that we want to be able to see. I can also, Lori, send you directly the TRAC movement to permanent housing for that specific program. But I think it's also important that we look at system-wide data as well on how are we doing across all of our homeless services.
Jen, you mentioned Cannon. So mentioning Cannon as enclosed or has there been some chatter about opening Cannon again? Because we thought that was off the table.
Well, so I kind of took a leap of chance, I suppose, in putting a request into the Emergency Housing Fund for funds to operate Cannon. It's already closed. They wouldn't tell me whether or not they would fund that. And they said, just put in everything that you could potentially want that would fit this. And so that's what I did and just added it in. And they may or may not fund us. I think that if they do fund us, we would need to evaluate what do we want to do with that reopening.
Any other questions? Yeah, I also just wanted to concur. It's great to see all that information in one thing. Usually, as you know, it comes to us one piece at a time, one set of programs at a time. Nobody really understands that. So super helpful. Glad you're thinking that way. And we'll look forward to further images that can get it all in our brains somehow, along with all the other 50 portfolios of city business that we have to try to keep in our brains. But super helpful. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Regional homeless team. If you had all that money, what would you do with it?
Good morning, Council President, Councilmembers. Thank you for having us back again. We've been having regular meetings since, let's see, it was March 13th when you all, along with the county and the valley, signed a joint statement in favor of exploring a regional collaborative and integrated approach to homelessness. And we had a 90-day due diligence period spelled out by that document. And we've been doing that. We're moving rapidly towards a June 28 event from 8:00 until 10:00 in the morning at the Convention Center and which will be rolling out our recommendations following that 90-day due diligence period. And so I know we're getting invites out now, hold the dates and everything else, but it's the 28th, a Wednesday, at the Convention Center from 8:00 until 10:00 in the morning. So I sat down very quickly this morning just partly to remember the why behind what we're doing. And of course, part of it is just all of our knowledge that when we can collaborate and work together and integrate, you get amazing outcomes. And in my 18 years at the city, I always found that if those things happen and they're hard to make happen, they're probably far harder than anything else in government, in my belief. But when they happen, money is never the problem. And that's an important point because I think we feel overwhelmed by the magnitude of this homelessness problem. And when we're overwhelmed by it, part of that, of course, is the financial component. And yet, we find that every single time we find a way to come together, work together, collaborate, and have that kind of integrated approach to a problem, money is never the problem. So with that said, I just wanted to, you know, one of our key foundations, we're going to go through our guiding principles, but one of them is that performance measurement is a huge part of what we would be proposing. You know, where we've been, where we are, where we're going. So I just put down some numbers just to look at where we've been and kind of where we are. So over the last 10 years, we had a HUD Required Point in Time Count delivered in April for 2023. And that number went up 36% in one year. Over the last 10 years, we're up 132%. But we all know we have a national homelessness problem. So it's hard to really contextualize numbers like that. They obviously aren't good. We obviously need to address them. But, you know, do we have to address them in a fundamentally new way or is the current system working? And I think maybe comparative points of data are helpful. We've talked a lot about Houston, but over the last 15 years, they're down 68% and they continue to see reductions currently. So they're not seeing that spike upwards. But talking about Houston is a little problematic. We know their homes are less expensive. They're about 23% less expensive than Spokane. So sometimes it's just helpful to look around for other areas that are doing that more collaborative, integrated approach and really focusing on that. And over my 18 years at city government, we always turn to a few cities. And one of them, probably the most significant in terms of, you know, being able to be compared to Spokane, is Boise. Boise has almost the exact same population as we do, just a little bit less in Ada County than we have in Spokane County. They have approximately the same median household income. They have homes that are actually $560,000 average. And the average in Spokane is $441,000. So in no way would I ever say that home prices aren't a big part of the homelessness problem. But Boise has homes that are 100,000 more, 120,000 more their median than Spokane's. So in many ways comparable. Probably the least comparable is the fact that their housing is significantly more expensive than the city of Spokane. So in that area, so our last count was 2,390 in our point in time count. Again, that's up 36% in just one year. Idaho's or Boise's is 687. So obviously dramatically less, less than a quarter of what we have here in Spokane. Just to kind of give you a sense of what that means in terms of our population. In Boise, 1 in 745 people is homeless. 1 in 745. In Houston, 1 in 1,446. So about 1 in 1,500. In Spokane, it's 1 in 228. One of the worst in the nation. And this has not been going on for one year. This was a tough year. This has not been going on for five or 10 years. This has been going on for a long, long time.
So how percent are in those Boise numbers Gavin you just?
Those are point in time count, same time period for 2023, coming out in April.
And while you're on that, how would you compare the area median income for Boise, Spokane, and Houston?
MHI did the median household income. So the MHI in Spokane is $64,079. It's a little, just a little higher than that in Houston. It's $65,788. And in Boise, it's 10,000 more, $75,155, which is probably explaining why their homes are, you know, 120,000 more expensive than the city of Spokane's. So with all that said, obviously, we're in a difficult situation and not going in the direction we like. So in talking to Houston, we've spent a long time studying Houston and we know that they have a fundamentally integrated and collaborative approach. When you really try to sit down with the mayor of Houston over three terms in which they made their biggest reductions, Anise Parker, she has always asked, of course, the question, how did you do it? You have the lowest per capita homelessness of any major city in America. How did you do that? And everybody's looking for that silver bullet. Everybody's looking for that secret sauce. And she always comes back and says, you know, we could discuss all kinds of programs and how we approach different things. But the one significant difference between how we approach it and every other major jurisdiction in this country that's not performing in this kind of way is that we're fundamentally regional and collaborative. We bring everything together. We share a strategic plan. We share data and we share outcomes. And that's the secret sauce. She says, you can press me on individual issues and programs and things that we do, but at the end of the day, that's the magic. And so that brings us back to the why behind what we're proposing. So we've talked about this slide a few times, but it's just good to go back and revisit that why. So it's a regional collaborative approach at the top. It's a long-term structural challenge. As I said, you know, these numbers go back 15 years that we're looking at. In Spokane, we're, you know, we're up, the numbers that were up. And there's no break in that. So we can recognize this isn't just a blip on the landscape. This is something we're going to have to deal with long-term. So we need a long-term permanent structure to deal with it. Again, just emphasizing the integrated approach with shared strategies. It's important at this point to just say, it's not about poor performance on the part of any governmental, or we'll get into it later in our principles, any of the providers that are in this workspace. It's, in the first case with government, we fundamentally believe that local government, municipal and county, municipal corporations are not designed to deliver social services. And so, you know, when you have an organization or this kind of activity buried in an organization where, of course, public safety is the number one priority, it's about 62% of the general fund budget, then you've got this other program that you're, you know, that you have to pay attention to at the same time with all these other priorities. And so we just fundamentally believe that a single-purpose organization that's still a public corporation, but not in a very large one like the city of Spokane, using that example with, you know, 50 other departments that it's competing with for the attention. And then de-politicizing the issue. And what that really means is not, you know, the politics are going to be an important part, extremely important part, whether it's local, state, federal. Those relationships are going to be critical going forward for this regional approach. But it does recognize that we want the subject matter expertise and the single organization, the single-purpose focus coming forward through a regional approach as opposed to part of a much, much larger organization where many different things are going on all at once. So what can we expect on the 28th of this month when we roll out the recommendations following the 90-day due diligence period? Well, we'll provide a legal structure. And I think it's no secret at this point that we're fundamentally moving towards a public development corporation. These are mostly, as Jen Seracidi just pointed out, mostly government dollars and that public oversight through the electeds is absolutely critical. We looked at nonprofits. We see other jurisdictions doing it. But we fundamentally believe that this has to have that governance through electeds. So it's a public development corporation. But the governance that we'll present on the 28th does stay true to that guiding principle that it gets politics out of the decision-making. So you'll see a governance structure that accomplishes that and we can get more into that. We'll talk about initial funding for the organization on the 28th. We'll talk about the staffing and that, we'll get more into that as we talk about the guiding principles. And we'll get into the governance structure. And you'll see a detail of what the board and Advisory Commission and the ad hoc committees look like under this new approach that we're recommending. So then we just get into the how. And I think we've talked, you know, this is fundamentally about housing, health, and safety and those intersect in areas that, you know, touch on homelessness. And so that's really the, you know, the how we accomplish what we're going to accomplish. And we'll be talking about that quite a bit also on the 28th. But I just want to set expectations. This is fundamentally about setting up an organization to succeed on a regional collaborative basis and integrated approach. It's not about those details that should be best established by the professional management and staff that will become a part of this new organization. So I use the example, when the city got out of the business of transit in 1980, they set up a legal formation. They set up governance. They set up staffing, funding, et cetera. They didn't talk about what fares would be charged on the buses, what routes they'd be taking, what types of buses they would purchase. be taking, what types of buses they would purchase. They weren't the right people to make those decisions, but the people that then were staffed into that new organization made all of those decisions. And I think we can all see that that makes a lot of sense. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over. We have here today, and I should have introduced right at the start, we have Teresa Sanders and Rick Romero and Mike Wormsby. As you know, we all worked together for many, many years here in this organization, so it was probably pretty natural for us to turn to those people we know and trust to work on an initiative like this. We're all 100% volunteers in what we're doing. And so we're just going to take turns presenting different aspects here. But I'd like to get into those guiding principles or hand them off to Rick Romero. I think he'll start here and then roll into the principles. Rick?
So, good morning. Thank you. Thank you Gavin. So before we leave this slide, I just want to point out one thing here, and it's that two-way arrow that's sitting between the what and the how category. And we've worked through some of the issues like Gavin's talked about on the what. We've had some discussions of the how, but something's got to bind those two things together. And so what we would like to present to you now is the eight principles that will really be the foundation of our recommendations on the 28th. And so let's, let's forward to that. So these principles, I've, I've had a couple of people ask me, well, why didn't you establish principles at the beginning of this process? And why are you doing it now at, at the end of your, or close to the end of your 90 days? My answer to that is if we had established those principles at the beginning, they would have been ideological and philosophical and not based on the homework and the data and the input that we received over this 90 days. So these guiding principles are not there to be our ideology among the three of us. They're what we believe we need to adopt upfront to be successful with the regional entity. So the first two there are value-based. They're recognizing, obviously, that our region does care for those that are in need. And it also acknowledges that we've got a lot of service providers who are, who are doing great work out there. It also acknowledges that our, our region wants and deserves a clean and safe community. So in our joint statement that we adopted, we indicated that we're going to look at this from the perspective of those in need, but also from the perspective of the community as a whole. So those first two value statements are really trying to address that issue. The next four principles are really kind of what we're seeing as what needs to sit above that how discussion. And we're not going to try to bring forward recommendations on the how. Like Gavin said, we need to create the entity, establish the board, and get the professionals starting to work on those, those issues about how are we going to guide how we're making decisions around this. So we see these fours as being really fundamental to that. We believe that it's, it's a true statement that individuals can be helped out of homelessness with the appropriate services, work, and expectations to succeed. And again, we feel like that statement is critical to how we adopt the, the individual tactics going forward. Our region cannot only build our way out of our homeless crisis, we have to have services and housing as the path to success. We've got a lot of dollars that are predicated on the housing side of this. We've got some dollars that are predicated on the service side of this, but I don't feel like we've done a really great job of figuring out how to connect and put those together in a, in a, a more important way. Treatment. Treatment's a priority, and detention remains a necessary tool. It's recognizing that you have to have both of those, but I think one of the things that we've heard loud and clear from folks that we've talked to who have, who have come out of this, this experience is that if they were left to make the choice without being compelled, they wouldn't have made the right choice. And so we have to recognize that we have folks that are in addiction situations, other situations, where compelling that right choice and right decision is important.
Rick? I'm just going to stop you on that one. Do we have data on that? I know there's anecdotes, but have we really looked into what the actual data on that? Because I'm a little skeptical of that as far as data, but maybe there is.
We'll, we will do a little more homework on that, Council President, and, and try to bring the answer to that forward. But we certainly have responses from individuals who are telling us that.
Yeah, no, I know there's anecdotes, but I want to know, is, are they unicorns? Or is that, that's why I'm looking for that data. Because I think people, their belief about that without any data informs a lot of what they want to do or not. So if we could get to the data for most people, what is effective most of the time, that would help us, I think.
All right. Let's see what we can do with that. I think this last one, number six, emergency shelter is not housing but a connection point to services. And Teresa on the next slide is going to kind of talk a little bit about our, our vision and what some of our recommendations may, may be around that. Obviously, we're in a situation where we have a current shelter that we're going to have to transition into something that, that gets us to more in line with that statement. And we will be bringing some recommendations forward on the 28th with respect to that as well. The last two here, I think, are really the recommendations about the structural part of this. So we've got our values, we've, we've kind of got our, our overriding principles around how we believe this needs to work, but those last two are really around the what. And, and it, it really gets at the integration of the dollars, the services, and the people and the data. And again, really appreciated hearing Jen's presentation on the financial side of this. And the three of us, Teresa and Gavin and I, all have finance backgrounds and, and business backgrounds in government, and it's still, our, our minds are still spinning around the different pots of dollars that are out there to try to tackle this problem. And the challenge to us is how in the world can we integrate those so that we're doing it in a strategic way as opposed to, to, to working within separate siloed buckets of money? So that, that's really such an important piece of what we want to, want to recommend.
Rick, Councilmember Kinnear has her hand up, but we can't see it. Councilmember, come here.
Thank you. Thank you. And Rick, I'm just so glad that the three of you are at the helm of this because I have the utmost confidence in your abilities. And of course, Mr. Wormsby. You mentioned and Council President mentioned anecdotal information about looking at what is driving some of this. And I, I just want to be, everybody to be aware that the highest growing demographic, the fastest growing demographic for homelessness right now are people over 60. And so I think when we look at this, we have to be open-minded about who we are going to have to serve. Because those aren't folks necessarily with mental health issues or with addiction issues. Those are people who are priced out of housing. And so I want to make sure when we're going forward, we are including all of these folks who have these challenges. So that's, that's my comment. Thank you.
So, so thank you, Lori. I really appreciate that comment. And actually, our last slide, Teresa will cover really kind of that this isn't either or, it's, it's, it's all of the above. In other words, we've got to have a strategy here that addresses the components of this problem in, in varying ways, but also in an integrated and strategic manner. So Teresa will cover that a little bit with, with her slide next. And I think the last guiding principle here is really just an acknowledgement and understanding that, that we have to have a long-term lasting solution to this. And we really fundamentally believe, as Gavin said, that it needs to be a separate entity that sole purpose is to address this issue and can bring those dollars and resources and data and people together to attack it. So seven and eight here, I think, from, from our perspective are pretty much non-negotiable. We, we really feel like that that is what we're basing all of our recommendations on. So I'll turn that over to Teresa now, and thank you.
Thank you. I have tech support. I love this. Thank you, councilmembers, for taking a little bit of time with us today. And special thank you to Council President Beggs and Councilmember Bingle for engaging throughout the process. I would like to just take a minute to celebrate our community and where we've been so far. I've been really overwhelmed by the level of engagement that we've seen in the community and people really speaking up with passion about this topic and their desire for better in our community. And I think that doesn't happen everywhere, so I think we need to acknowledge that and celebrate that. We are pretty excited to bring a set of recommendations forward. I so appreciate Jen's presentation earlier because I think it's a beautiful example of the complexity of this system of funding and services. And you can tell with just a glimpse at that how challenge it must, how challenging it must be for the service providers in our community to navigate, to figure out how to build capacity of organization, to get to a place where we can do better, as well as how incredibly difficult it must be for members of the community that are experiencing homelessness or have lived experience there to be able to navigate. It's a tricky, tricky thing to be able to navigate. So this slide that you have up now isn't intended to say, here's our, our grand operational plan. What it essentially does, it tells you that we see an opportunity to focus on a different end of the spectrum than we have historically. Because of lots of great reasons, of sources of state and federal funds in particular, the vast majority of our, our investment and attention has been on the where to put people rather than on the people themselves. And I so appreciate Lori Kinnear's question because I think this is exactly where we need to shift strategy is understanding the individuals that are impacted and what might be causal to their experience. And it's, as Rick said, it's not one thing or the other. As you know, for all of these complicated challenges, there is no easy set of solutions. If, if there was, I think we would have found that switch and flipped it by now. But we know that we have to come together to solve multiple causal situations and then deliver the right service need and then the right housing and support need continuing. And by the way, as we also know, that's on a continuous loop. To get folks through the process, if our expectation is that people can achieve outcomes from homelessness, to get to a stabilized housing environment, then we have to know that we need to provide service throughout the level of this. So we look at what might be causal. In some cases, the condition might be economic. It could be mental health. It could be addiction-related and a number of other things. We know that coming into a shelter model that we're going to call triage, because we're going to, you see a recommendation that we rethink what shelter is, and that it is in fact a triage model to get to the cause and to get the service associated with the individual and get them where they need to be. You'll hear from our housing providers that they are challenged, once they have folks into housing, to get the right level of service to them so that we do in fact get throughput and outcomes for individuals. So even though state and federal funding has been very largely focused on housing itself, critically important, we can't stabilize folks without stable housing, but we must have the service associated with the specific needs. One of the things that was eye-opening to me in this entire process was in discussions with, in looking at the data and discussions with law enforcement, both within the cities and at the county, what they're experiencing on the street is, is just magnitudes of change different than what homelessness looked like just a few years ago. And we're seeing a level of acuity of individuals on the street, which Councilmember Beggs, I think, is where we get to that place where, how, how do we find the right mechanism for, for compelling folks to care for themselves so that we can get through to the other side? And where is that connecting point? And that's a really big discussion. I don't want to make a direct tie to the criminal justice system because I think that's unfair to homeless in general, but I feel like where every single one of these touchpoints is complex, we need to address and understand each of the potential outcomes for the individual to get to the outcome for the person.
So I wanted to just add on to that because I was having the same thought. In a criminal justice reform, we're doing the same thing. We're doing it person by person. Instead of fitting people into a system, we're designing a system that finds the person and tailors the intervention. And that we're doing that in criminal justice, which is a different system, a different set of people for the most part, but it's the same thing. It works. The data shows that it works.
Yes. Thank you, Council President. That's exactly, I guess, where my head was as I was thinking about how do we, it doesn't matter what we, what we as individuals think the right solution is. If we don't apply the right solution to the individual challenge, we can't get the outcome. And so if we're going to be outcome-driven, then we have to understand that at a very, at a very basic level. And it includes all of, all of the intervention, support services, and housing components that we have today and probably a set of new ones that, that we will develop over time. So we, I, I want to just hit for a second on that triage component because you'll see us get into detail about how we re-envision shelter. As one of our principals says, shelter is not housing, it's the, it's the conduit to the service set. So we reimagine triage as having multiple levels of, of inputs to it, not just, today it's largely individuals that are looking for a place to be, but it's largely law enforcement connected, getting folks off the street into a place where they can have a safe bed and a meal. That component has to be service-related. We have to have really significant throughput from that triage, understand that individual, and get them into the right housing and support service need. And again, critically important, it doesn't end there. As we move people out of a supportive housing environment into independent housing environments, the service connection has to be continued to be made as we go. So this will give you the framework of specific recommendations. When you see the recommendations on the 28th, you won't hear anything surprising from us other than that we clearly strongly believe that an integrated model is the only way to get to an outcome that addresses people first and getting them through the process and getting tangible, measurable outcomes for our community. We'll make a couple of bold statements about what we think should happen with housing and health and public safety to help us as an integrated organization. And I will also say that I'm pretty sure what we're recommending is phase one. I'll tell you what's been inspiring about this project so far is the opportunities for integration and connection in the community of service providers and healthcare providers, and it is just massive. And so we can do so much more. We can be the community that others look to for the community that has solved this challenge or done the best job addressing this challenge, and I really look forward to helping the community drive down that path. So thank you so much for your time and expect to hear more from us soon.
I'll just wrap up real quick.
I think Councilmember Bingle might have had a question.
I didn't have a question, I had a statement, and so if you wanted to, go ahead, then I'll.
I would invite Mr. Wormsby up right now, but he, along with a number of other individuals who have been helping us with an interlocal agreement, that will be a draft interlocal that we'll be handing off along with enabling legislation. I don't think you want to hear about that. I've been trying to wade through it. But he's been working with Judge Harold Clark and Chris Anderson, the head over at the county, and Jim Imasio, who preceded Mr. Anderson, Jeff Nave, who was our bond counsel for a number of years and has immense experience in the sector, Roy Cogan likewise. So an amazing team of lawyers that have been working just on that component alone. And as Teresa said, the input has been overwhelming at all fronts. I mean, in many ways, I think we're kind of excited to hand it off because just yesterday, I think I had four meetings with individual groups, and I have never drank so much coffee in my entire life. So I need something in my hand. I drink a lot of decaf now, but we've met with providers. Continuum Care has been really generous with their time and their attention. Robert Lippman was here earlier. Ariel Anderson is the co-chair there. They have a work group that's met, I think, four times, again, meeting today, and extremely helpful with input and advice and direction. Many, many civic groups, business and other businesses themselves, and civic organizations, nonprofits, yes, PGSI. I've been meeting with the Board of County Commissioners. We met twice in the last couple of weeks with the City of the Valley Council. And that's just a short list. So the 28th handoff sounds almost like a relief, but it will be handed off. And I, I think I'll just say that we're hopeful that there'll be a fairly short period. We know that this is unfortunately dramatically affected by seasons here in Spokane, and as winter approaches, almost sounds like Game of Thrones, winter is coming, you know, but we have a definite sense of that. So, and we also have a definite sense of the forward momentum on this really important issue, and we hope to maintain that kind of momentum to really accomplish new things. Change is a big challenge, and every organization is designed to be a big change in government. But we really appreciate your help and assistance. Council President Beggs and Councilmember Bingle, we'll see you tonight at 4 o'clock in those recurring meetings that we enjoy. And any final comments or questions?
I have a question for him before you get to your statement. So on the 28th, like, where can we, where, I forget, are we all invited or are we sort of convening everybody? What's the, what, and I know maybe not all the details, but just give us a preview so you can get people excited to put it on their calendar.
Thank you. Yeah, the, the detail will be there on governance and all sorts of things like that, so people can expect a lot more detail than we're providing today, and they expect it and they'll get it. We would like the electors to play a central role. I, I think we were going to ask some feedback when we did that at the library a while ago. Was that a comfortable layout or is there a layout you would prefer? We're fundamentally at your service, so would love to hear what you think the approach. But where I, in my mind, imagine on the stage, if that was, is what works, or right there at the stage, but, or whatever you all think.
I don't know. I just want to know what you, what you're, see, we are so glad you're doing this. You're just tell us where to go, and we'll be there. But just, we just need to be clear on what you need out of us.
Fantastic. Well, we'll, we'll come up with something and send a draft and get feedback. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Bingle, and I don't know if you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks again for all of your hard work, all of your hard volunteer work and months and months of efforts and energy. I thought you all have gone about this in a really smart way, whereas this is a community-wide challenge. And I especially appreciate it as you were putting your work group together, that you were very mindful of the differences in opinion and thought as you were bringing that group together, that it is a community-wide challenge. And I think it has a better chance of lasting success if it's something that we can all buy into and be a part of. And so I just wanted to say thank you for your, your vision and your foresight on that and looking forward to the, to the 28th, looking forward to tonight. But, but no, I think we've, we've done a, a good job, and I think we, we're going to have something good, so.
Yeah. Councilmembers of Pone.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for all this information, ton of information. I was just wondering, after the 28th, is the process going to be more of like an up-down vote to adopt it, or is it still more feedback and modifying? Like, what's the expectation after that point?
And maybe that's just a great consideration, you know, what, that public process, which is so important, and as much as we go out and have coffee or meet with groups or present, it's not the same as what you receive on Monday nights and all the other input you receive. So we're hopeful it'll fairly short because we want to keep moving, but long enough to do that very important job that you have, that public process, that, the, the public political input process, I think is critical. So maybe something like six weeks, we would hope to have things moving along. We'll stay busy during that time. There's lots to do.
But there'll be still like revisions to any interlocal agreement, sort of?
Well, we look back and we see that joint statement, and I think there were, and I don't want to invite this, but a lot of edits to get to a place. And I will say, it was a better document when everybody was done with it than what we initially submitted, so I anticipate the same.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to weigh in on that. Thank you, Councilmembers of Pone. So we would anticipate that each of the individual jurisdictions would evaluate the interlocal agreement that you will see in, in front of you and make recommendations. We are fairly confident, we tried to make it as straightforward a process as We tried to make it as straightforward a process as possible. In my perfect world, I would love to see multi-jurisdictional joint acceptance of the document. That would be magical if we could show that sort of unity in Spokane. But we would hope for a fairly swift turnaround, as Gavin said, given seasonal constraints and some of the challenges that we have, we would love to go swiftly. And also, I do want to say that our volunteer effort ends on the 28th. However, if the jurisdictions decide to move forward with the regional authority, then Gavin and Rick and I would be happy to come in and assist with the startup phase. So if that's something that would be useful, that's something that we would consider helping with.
Yeah, I just want to follow up. You mentioned the multi-jurisdictional part, and I was just reading the Inlander article, and it sounds like the Valley, and there's some questions around there? I just wonder if you could speak to what's going on with the Valley because I haven't heard from them.
So I think Rick and Gavin have spent more time with the Valley folks than I have. But from my perspective, they're doing what each of the jurisdictions does, which is trying to understand what the impact is for their community and the citizens within their boundaries and understanding if the value add is significant enough for them to be able to join the group. So the City of the Valley is a sizable enough city now where they could extract their funds that are currently managed by Spokane County and stand up their own homeless programs. As with your experience, you know that if you're a smaller city, managing programs of this magnitude is probably not something that you would recommend. So we're actually quite hopeful that they're going to come along with us.
So Teresa's right. That's exactly where they're at. I think, just an additional point, and one of the reasons why we wanted to get the principals out there now and focus on those a little bit, is that the last council meeting that we were at, their concern really had to do around ideological and philosophical differences. So I think by getting those principals in front of them, it's an opportunity to ask themselves, do we really have ideological and philosophical differences or is this an approach that we can buy into?
And I thought that the Inlander also mentioned that they were concerned about like what they're already allocating funds to with their homeless services and would that be continued or not? I think after our presentation and discussion, like, we're also allocating and promising funds for track or something. Will that continue or not continue?
So I think, that's a great question. And so just as an example, we had, the West Plains PDA, we had a board meeting this morning, and it's, that entity is five years old. And we're still dealing with funding and intent and language changes even to the ILA potentially at this stage. But what we did there is we created an entity with a great board and a great set of principles to guide it. And those decisions are going to continue to move around between the what and the how over the next few years. But just as we've seen out there, we've had some, I think, really pretty impressive things have happened once we created it, but we didn't have all the answers when we stood it up.
I, and I, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but based on listening to you all present to us in the past, and it might have changed, but the initial agreement proposed is really just for the federal and state pass-through funds. It's not for general funds. So it's initial. And the city has three-quarters of those funds, something like that? I mean, we have a big player. And so my own view is, anyone who wants to help join us in this, I'm like, I'm very flexible. When we were doing the joint statement, I told them out in the, I'm like, whatever language you want, come join us. Like, we're doing it mostly on our own. And I appreciate that there is money that comes through the county and City of Spokane Valley is big enough that they are allocated some money and they give it to the county. So people are trying it. But really, we're doing the bulk of it and anything that we can do. But for simplification, it's really, I think, the original agreement is going to be pass-through funds. So what cities and the county is doing with any general funds, and I think we're pretty much the only game in town with general funds and local tax dollars. But over time, as trust builds and things are success, then we might say, all right, yeah, we'll do our general funds there and maybe they'll do some. And so that's how I see it. But I think the initial agreement is the pass-through money that's coming to the community. Instead of people applying to the county and the city for the same kinds of monies, they just go to one place and then that one authority figures out who's the best provider for each service that they're best at. So we're not duplicating services or the administration, I think, is the simple. And then we build it out over time.
Excellent. No, great points. And I just also wanted to point out that we also had three other cities from the West Plains, Medical Lake, Cheney and Airway Heights, also asked to sign on and become part of the discussion. So they've joined our discussions and so we're going to continue to reach out and hope that we get all of the region together on this.
Well, this is just a question on it. So like, while we're trying to figure out how we're going to fund track this year ongoing, there are federal and state funds. So this would now move over to the PDA.
The federal and state part of it, we would go to them and say, yeah.
Okay. I was like, I guess I'm trying to grasp, like, are we trying to find a solution for track that's long-term or are we going to now hand that over and hope that they're going to choose to fund track or not, but yet we're kind of committing to it?
Well, that's our dream. But I think in the short term, it's going to be a hybrid, I think. In the short term, it's a hybrid.
Great.
If I could just, since we have you, thank you for that question because shelter is obviously a very significant part of this conversation. And one of the things that is really important is that anything that's currently underway today will continue to be underway. There won't be a moment where we just say, we're, stop doing everything, we're going to do something new. The funding model for shelter in the City of Spokane, as you know, is large and complex, and it is actually the most challenging component of overall set of recommendations and how we move forward. So I understand from the City of Spokane's challenges and the need for shelter space and going backwards is not an option. Trying to figure out how we get forward in the least disruptive way while not tipping over the regional authority with the vast expense related to track is the critical piece. So you are correct. Yeah.
Well, and then a question about staff. So does that mean our staff that's working on it now would no longer be employed at the city because we might be doing those services?
The recommendation will be that those funding sources as well as the overhead related to those grants, so that's how folks are funded to do this work in the various jurisdictions, that overhead would also go. How the individuals, where they sit and how that happens is variable based on the needs of our employees because that's a critically important piece. And Councilmember Beggs has a lot of experience with this. So we want to make sure our people are cared for, but making sure that they're also aligned under the central authority. That is the critical piece, is alignment under the central authority.
And that has a lot to do with setting the fares and the routes.
Yes, it does.
So that's kind of in that. The principle is take care of our employees.
Yep.
And everybody has a place to land, but figuring out those details, more to come.
And I think we can't highlight enough the extraordinary work that people have done and are continuing to try to do. We just are now sort of revealing the limitations of the model within which folks are working. And the idea is better in all cases. Let's get better.
And then I have to also ask a question that people in the community have been asking me. I understand that you all are volunteers, but there are costs associated with this collaborative effort, the website, finding people from Houston. I think the meeting's going to be at the convention center. Like, who's paying for those costs?
So we have a wonderful person by the name of Sarah Schwering, who's actually been marshaling the three of us, and she'll be managing the event. And as you mentioned, we brought in the individual from Houston, and those are collaboratively funded in the business community between Hello for Good and Avista. They've been the biggest supporters and advancing for the community. So those are the only folks that are funded to do this work.
Is it like a 50/50? Just because this is like a big?
I don't actually know the answer to that.
I think for me, it'd be important to have some transparency about the funding of this effort since it's asking for publicly funded dollars and government entities to sign on.
I think that's a great question. Thanks so much. I really don't know. I don't know what the total dollars are or who's writing what checks. But, well, I can get that for you, for sure.
I appreciate it.
Councilmember Kinnear has a question as well. Councilmember Kinnear.
Thank you. Teresa, I want to go back to your comment about the staff and taking care of staff because, I want to ask you, ask the group, have, do you feel like you've had support from our staff on moving this initiative forward? Because remember at the very beginning, one of the issues, I know Gavin outlined was that the resistance could come from both providers and current staff that may feel that jobs were in jeopardy. So my question is, has everyone been cooperative and working with you to see a path forward?
Thank you for that question so much because I think it really speaks to the challenge of change and really imagining, you know, the possible and the art of imagining the possible. And so anytime you bring up change in an organization, especially a large bureaucracy like ours or like this one, since it's no longer mine, I would say that people often feel that change or a request for change is an indictment of past behavior. And it absolutely is not. The short answer to your question is yes, people are being very cooperative, both city and county and City of the Valley, as well as the small jurisdictions that Rick just mentioned. But they are also quite rightly challenging the why. And I think, I think that's their job to do. And it's like, is the community going to get better? Are we going to get better? And they ask that question, and we work with them to make sure that that question gets answered because that's what they're here to do.
I want to qualify that just one way. I was talking to some future physicians assistants at the med school about housing and homelessness and drug addiction, and they were saying, you know, you tell us all the things the city's doing, great, we support it, but things seem pretty bad. And I said, well, yeah, there's a lot of forces that are beyond our control. And I said, just think how bad it would be if we weren't doing these things. So I really think that the standard is not, have you gone back to five years ago? The question is, are you making it better than it would be if we didn't do it?
Yes, I totally agree. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everyone. It's great, pretty darn exciting, and we'll see you in two weeks. And with that, we are adjourned. We'll see folks on Monday. Monday, Sunday.